Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 29th Webster's Board of Education meeting. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in part.
Board members, may we please have a motion to move on to the executive session?
Second.
And you'll have the second, all in favor?
We.
Okay, motion carries. You've had a chance to look at the agenda tonight. Are there any alterations or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion to accept? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda stands as published. We offer the opportunity for anyone in the audience, a chance to speak to the Board of Education. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Lorenzo and Josh, welcome. Is this your last time with us?
For the year, and then for him ever.
Yeah. Well, we'll see you then on, yeah, RIT. Okay, who wants to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
Good evening, Board members. With only a few weeks remaining in school year, Titans are finishing up their courses and preparing for their regions that lie ahead. The boys lacrosse team faced Fairport in their semifinal champions championship, but unfortunately, they were defeated eight to six. They finished with a record of 12 and 6. The girls and boys track team had a very successful county championships. Kevin Witt, Keith Johnson, Mark Bay Schultz, and Claire Ashton were named First Team All County, and nine other athletes were named to Second Team All County. The boys baseball team faced McQuade in their second round of sectionals, and unfortunately, they were defeated seven to four. The boys finished out their season 16 and 6. We are very proud of all of our Titan athletes and their performances this year. We would also like to give a special thanks to our senior athletes for all they've done for our athletic department, and we wish them the best of luck after high school. Everyone at Thomas would like to congratulate Carlos Rodriguez, who was selected to be among 200 students in the state as a representative to the 24th Annual Puerto Rican and Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute. The Webster-Thomas players recently revealed their musical for next year. Join us in late March to see Webster-Thomas put on Sweet Charity. All of us are excited for this beautiful follow-up to this year's musical, Anything Goes. Class and student council elections will begin in the next few weeks. The Titans are excited to begin campaigning and to take over the cabin in a Webster-Thomas. We wish the best of luck to all of our students running for office. A few weeks ago, the Thomas physics students and teachers visited Darien Lake Theme Park to study real-life physics. The students were able to experience and see physics come alive outside of the classroom. They completed a few labs based on the rides in the park. They didn't seem to mind much because they spent the rest of the day riding roller coasters. One of our last concerts of the year is next Monday. It will highlight the Webster Show Choir, featuring both Thomas and Schrader students, our Select Choir, Corral, Concert Choir, our Barbershop Acapella Group, and many other acts. If you are free, please come see our course department in its final concert of the year. It's hard to believe that there are only two weeks remaining in the 2013 and 2014 school year. This year has certainly tested the students with new additions such as the Common Core to our freshmen, but the students feel very prepared for the next year, whether that may be high school, college, or another path. This is my last board meeting of the year, and I can say I've loved providing my view of Webster-Thomas to all of you, so thank you again, and have a great summer.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Good job.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you for having me back here again tonight and for my final time. First tonight, the counselors and the school are immensely proud of three students for their perfect ACT scores. Michael Encardozza and Maria Kualchuk with a 35, and Kyle Zhao with a 36. And another academic celebration was held this morning before school. Our Academic Excellence Breakfast was put on to honor 22 seniors who are the top in their class, along with one junior who is graduating, all of whom reached the summa cum laude honor. This summer, from August 4th through the 6th, Schrader will be hosting its first-ever AP camp. In this camp, students who are taking an AP course in the 2014-2015 academic year are invited to partake in workshops and sessions that will help prepare them for the rigorous course load expected with an AP course, as well as develop necessary skills to do their best on the exam in May. Sessions and workshops will be instructed by current AP teachers and former AP students. Speaking of academic excellences and always striving to do your best, this past month has been filled with celebrations of hard work of our students over the past year. On May 7th, 18 Schrader students were inducted into the Business and Marketing Honor Society of New York State. Also, 25 more students were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for the 2013-2014 academic year for the Eastern Monroe Career Center. Students are recognized for cosmetology, medical careers, criminal justice, among many more fields. Congratulations to all of the 43 students on your achievements. Our speech and debate team went to Chicago this past weekend to compete in the National Speech and Debate Competition. Thirteen Schrader students qualified to participate in their respective events at the competition. Of the 13 students, two students, sophomore Aleif Urson in declamation, and junior Sarah Stone Francati in oral interpretation, placed as octo-finalists. The coaches are immensely proud of all participants and of the whole team for all their successes over the year. Tonight, in the Schrader auditorium, the 9th and 10th Grade Awards Night is being held to recognize those students who went above and beyond in their academic pursuits over the past year. The 11th and 12th Grade Awards will be held within the next two weeks. Tomorrow night, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Nazareth College's Shared Space 2014 Showcase is being held at Nazareth College. This event is a high school art teacher and high school student show, where works from the two are displayed. From Schrader, we have three pairs, teacher Carolyn Carlton with Katherine Tereshenko, teacher Bill Stevens with Anna Hershey, and teacher Kathy Morrell with Michael Perbola. We hope that you can stop by to see the amazing work. Also tomorrow, after you stop by the showcase, of course, our Junior Prom is being held at Eaglevale in Penfield from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and the junior class urges all Board members to stop on by to see the excitement of the night and maybe even dance a little on the dance floor. In addition to more invitations, Board members are welcome to come to Schrader on June 4th to win this Decision Day. On this day, the seniors will be sporting their future college's spirit wear, getting their caps and gowns, and enjoying some cake and lemonade provided by the PTSA and the counselors. And finally, we would like to congratulate sophomore Matt Gamble, who was announced today as a top seed for the NYSPHSAA, mouthful, Boys Tennis Singles in the State. We wish him best of luck with all of his tennis endeavors. Thank you again for allowing me to share the happenings of Schrader with you for the final time. It's been a pleasure to attend these meetings over the past two years. Thank you. I'll see you all at graduation in a month, exactly. Are there any questions?
No. But Josh and Lorenzo, we can't let you leave without giving you a little token of our appreciation. You did a great job of being a student liaison for the board this year. So we have a little, I guess it's a Webster Proud sticker, and a nice little, I don't know what you'd call it, a pin that says, "Believe, wait a minute, Imagine, Believe, and Achieve." So we'd like to present these to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can take that with you. It's a remembrance.
That's right, for your two years of service. You can take it, too?
Yeah, we'll make a new one.
We'll make a new one.
Okay, Lisa, come on up, WTA.
Good evening, Board.
Hello.
Tonight, I'm going to briefly highlight the elementary teachers that have been nominated but not selected for Oak Tree. Nancy Nesbit is a 2nd grade teacher at Clem North. Nancy is a model teacher who is clearly student-centered. She provides a safe place for educational risks. Using a positive nurturing approach, she puts each student first and creates an environment where they can be successful. She's loved and appreciated by her parents. As a continuous learner herself, she constantly looks for what the best practices in education are, including taking workshops to sharpen her already exemplar skills. Very active in her profession and in the community, she never stops giving of herself. She's an exceptional team player who's all about the students. Cindy Hanley is a 2nd grade teacher at State Road. Cindy is kind and loving and makes her, and making her incredibly, which makes her incredibly effective with students. Parents share she's one of the best. She involves her students in different levels of activities in the classroom, making it truly an open environment for learning. Communication with parents is a responsibility she takes very seriously. The partnership between home and school, she feels, is essential to students' happiness and growth as learners. Cindy makes learning fun. Cindy is a masterful teacher. She leads the way in her ability to plan with vision. Cindy is known for her emotionally safe classroom environment, where students feel free to take risks and make mistakes. She incorporates her love for music in her instruction, which is another way that she gives of herself to her students. Kathy Lawson is a 3rd grade teacher at Clem North. Kathy forms an important educational bond with her students. The results are students love coming to school. In the nurturing environment she creates, students feel safe to learn and grow. Using different teaching techniques, students are engaged and can learn. She stays current on best practices using good teaching methods that assures students learn. The parents and her colleagues share that Kathy goes above and beyond to be the best teacher she can be. A quote that Kathy shared, "Serenity is not absent from the storm, but finding the peace admits it." She says it reminds her that learning can be messy, even noisy, but she's capable of calmly and artfully navigating through educational waters. Lori Foss is a 2nd grade teacher at Plank North. Lori is an amazing teacher who's been involved in various school endeavors throughout her career. Her positive attitude, warm personality, makes her an asset to her school. She's praised by both parents and colleagues alike. Lori's magic lies in the warm relationships she has with her students. Parents share that communication is clearly one of her strengths. As a knowledgeable professional, Lori knows school climate's essential. She's been involved in many school and district initiatives to assure there's a positive, supportive environment in her school. She uses fun as a tool, as she differentiates to meet the wide range of learners in her classroom. She's best known for infectious smile and wonderful sense of humor. Last but not least, Marlene St. James is a kindergarten teacher at Clem North. Marlene cares a lot about her students and their well-being. Her interaction with students is inspirational and warming to the heart. Marlene is exceptional with parents. They are grateful for her dedication to their children. She has seeked out and attended workshops so she can work collaboratively with her colleagues and learn best practices to use in the classroom. Heavily involved in schools initiatives, she does not hesitate to lead the charge when she knows it's best for kids. She knows her own continuous learning is vital. Teaming with parents, she feels together, they can provide the best educational program for each child. Her classroom is clearly a small community, a community of respect, responsibility, and reassurance. She makes it her mission to meet the unique needs of all of her students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I do not see Denise or Chris in the audience, so I guess we're not having a PTSA report. So that makes us moving on to our Citizens in Action course. Terry, are you going to present, or is it Jeff going?
I'll introduce Jeff.
Okay.
Good evening, and it's a wonderful celebration of excellence tonight, and really a celebration of social studies, and the incredible celebration of what our students are able to do, and in particular, as they exit into the next phase of their life. And so with that, I will turn over to Mr. Eckler, a teacher at Webster-Schrader, who will talk about Citizens in Action and our students who will celebrate.
Hi, I'm Jeff Eckler. I teach Global 10 and AP Government, and the course we're celebrating tonight, Citizens in Action, at Webster-Schrader, for those of you guys that don't know me. Thanks for allowing me to celebrate the success of our students here. We created Citizens in Action about three years ago. It was Jan Lederbein and Scott Wilcox at the time, as an assistants to senior project. And then, when the decision was made to kind of move away from senior project, the course kind of lived on because we understood the need to have a class that was a project-based learning approach. So we took kind of the emphasis of an inquiry-based model and a project-based learning, and took the economics and government requirements from the state, kind of combined them all into one. So these students here with you tonight will kind of share their experience and what they've done. We were able to, we start the course off with public policy issues, and the students all gravitate towards an issue they're passionate about. They contact with an expert, they do research, and then they kind of choose a path to how they can best fulfill changing perhaps a public policy, a law, themselves, others, other members of the community. It's really a wide range of openness, and tonight, I have three kind of examples for you. You know, Ally, I'll tell you a little bit about her experience. Her choice for a project was very personal. It was based off of personal experience. Pat had had a contact with an organization prior to the course, and he wanted to kind of further that, and he was able to. And Amanda really got in-depth with her passion for animal rights activists, and was able to contact with several individuals, and kind of, and each one of them in their own way, really grew throughout the course. And there's countless stories of that going on in the class, and these are just three, so I'll let them share that with you.
My name's Olivia Arcini, and I did a project on tanning and melanoma. And a week before senior year started, my stepdad died from melanoma, and that was due to tanning in his early twenties, so I knew from the start that my project should be on that. And so I started researching the New York State laws, and I discovered that if you're 17, you can still tan, if you're 18, you can tan, but only 16 and under is banned. So I looked up who I could talk to, so I started a letter-writing campaign, and I wrote up some letters and had people sign them, and I sent over 70 letters to Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, Senator Mike Nuzzolio, and Senator Ted O'Brien. And so far, I got one letter back from Ted O'Brien, but it was just that he was forwarding them to Senator Mike Nuzzolio. So I'm waiting to see what happens with that. But last night, my mom also did an art show at her work, and my artwork from AP Art was featured in it, and it was about my stepdad. So we raised over $100 for melanoma, and this summer I'll be competing in a 5K for melanoma, too. And me and my mom hope to keep up with this, and I can see what kind of laws I can change. That's my overall goal, to get it banned in New York State.
My name is Patrick Gurnoff, for my Citizens in Action project. I worked with Honor Flight Rochester, which is an organization which flies mainly World War II veterans to the National World War II Museum in Washington, DC. I really became interested in the program back when I was in 9th grade. I ended up writing an essay for the National World War II Museum, winning third prize. I was later recognized by the school for that. My project really this year, I went off and started a different project, and Mr. Eckler brought this to my attention, that I could do this project and pursue my love of, you know, saving history and helping to honor these veterans. And as myself, I ended up joining the United States Army. I leave for basic training this summer. And for all the veterans and everything, I think they got a really big kick out of that when they found out. And it's pretty fun to connect with them. And for my project, I ended up writing letters, and got a bunch of students and some of my soldiers to help write letters. And it was really meaningful, and it meant a lot to myself and to the community and everybody.
My name is Amanda Carroll. I've always been passionate about the environment and animal rights and such, so I've been in constant contact with Mrs. DeGravia, who is a teacher at Spry Middle School. And we watched the documentary Blackfish, which is about marine captivity and SeaWorld. So I decided to focus my project on the treatment of animals in marine captivity, specifically marine land and in Canada and SeaWorld. So Mrs. DeGravia contacted the ex-SeaWorld, the former SeaWorld trainers from around the US and Washington, Alaska, California, and to come to Rochester and speak about it. So once one signed up, they all followed suit. So they came to Rochester, and we, and she asked me to speak with them at Theater on the Ridge in the city, and about 700 people showed up, and the ex-SeaWorld trainers talked about their experiences, and I talked about my passion for the environment and how our generation can truly make a change. Before the event, I was asked to be on the news for Fox. We were interviewed in the morning to speak about our project and so, and I truly learned how easy it is to contact these people. I've been in constant contact with the SeaWorld trainers and the marine land trainer, Phil, and we've been working on passing legislation to protect these animals and hopefully gain them rights. And I continue to do, I will continue to do that and keep in contact with them, and it really helped me figure out what I want to do in the future and such.
Board members, any questions? We just heard three very impressive stories.
I'm going to jump around a little bit, but Pat, I actually remember a fundraiser you did a few years ago that raised a considerable amount of money, that you made a presentation during Senior Citizens Day.
Yes, sir.
And that was wonderful, so amazing that you have followed this for so consistently and long. So congratulations to you and good luck at basic training and in your future. And Amanda, what type of legislation are you looking for? Just like one example that would be protective, and what species would it go to protect?
In Canada, they do not have legislation protecting animal rights in captivity, so we're hoping to pass legislation to try and gain them rights as far as the water treatment there and the way they handle the animals, because marine land is like 10 times worse than SeaWorld. It's really bad, so they're trying to gain rights and have the government realize that animals aren't property and that they should have non-personhood status, which means they have rights as well, and they're intelligent.
Very good. And Olivia, did I pronounce your name right? Congratulations for you, too. That's got to be near and dear to your heart, and are you going to be pursuing a medical or research background as you graduate?
Yeah, I'm going to join ROTC next year and be an Army doctor, hopefully.
Very good, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Amanda, I happened to see you on the news that night. That was very interesting, putting, you did a very good job, you're very poised. Those are all excellent, laudable efforts that all three of you are going after, and I wish you success in trying to get the legislations changed. And Patrick, your upcoming interest in the Army, Godspeed.
I just want to say, if you ever have any extra time on your hands and want to advocate and find something additional to advocate, you can always use people to go to Albany and advocate for education, so.
I have a student who's doing the Common Core advocacy.
Okay, great. She's actually, she's giving a, yeah, she's giving a workshop for students?
She did.
She did.
She gave it two days ago. She had about 20 students there.
Very good. Great job, everybody.
Yes, great job, very impressive. In fact, we want to present each of you with a recognition award for your outstanding achievement, and you also will be receiving a little keychain that says, "Imagine, Believe, and Achieve."
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. That was very nice.
Okay, Terry, you might as well stay right up there, because now we're going to take a look at our social studies report. There was an article in Onboard, which is a magazine for school board members, and Greg Elquist was quoted a number of times in there, and the big thing that was coming out, at least my take, was inquiry. So I'm going to associate social studies with inquiry. We'll see how that works.
Well, and we'll talk about social studies being really based on science, social sciences, and really how we shift that. And so, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the work that we've been doing in social studies over the last year, and thank you to the team here that is presenting, coming out to share some of their successes and some of the work that they have been working on. And as we think about this year, certainly, we have a lot to celebrate. We have a lot of work to do, and we recognize that, and we're excited because it's the right work. But in the meantime, when we think about this past year, when we reflect, some wonderful opportunities, as we mentioned, the opportunities with Citizens in Action, but that's happening across the board in all of our buildings and all of our classrooms. We had the opportunity to spend the day with Model UN, Deputy Commissioner Slentz, Assemblyman Johns, we had a little bit of a meeting of the minds there in N100, right before Christmas Vacation, with two of our board members and Mrs. Bovard. Our AP, our students in social studies continue to take AP classes. We added an AP class this year, AP Government, and of all the departments, social studies has the highest percentage of students participating, and so we're very proud of that. And then the Citizens in Action course that we talked about was recently approved by the NCAA for students who are entering, who are athletes, and could use that course as one of their senior year social studies requirements. And so that's another important step for us. The biggest celebration, I think, for us, and certainly the cause for our work moving forward, is two streams, parallel streams, one at the national level, which was the adoption of the C3 frameworks, which focuses on college, career, and civic life, and then the New York State K-12 Social Studies framework. Both really bringing about a sea change of our discipline. And the C3 framework dovetails nicely with some of the work the board is undertaking with the strategic planning process focusing on career, college, and community readiness. This focuses, from a social studies perspective, as I mentioned, on college, career, and civic life. And when we think about social studies, it's really shifting from our mental mindset of what social studies was, which was around history and historical fact, and social studies is really about social sciences, which incorporates certainly history, and that's important, but we have geography and economics and political science and a connection to the humanities, to give students a broader picture of their world, certainly the past world, their present world, and to be able to make sense of what their future world might hold. And then ultimately, we want to move from what is a traditional mindset of active participation. We certainly want students to be actively participated, but it's not just participation, it's what they're participating about and where their focus is. And then focus on the common good in a globally interdependent world. It's not enough just to go to vote. We need to be informed, and we need to focus on what that vote means as it relates to the common good. Now, as far as the social studies framework itself, in terms of content, it hasn't changed in terms of the sequence much. There has been some tweaks within some courses. Where the change really comes in, and Mr. Sefalato, you mentioned this, this focus on the inquiry arc. And for most of us, if we were to think back on our social studies experience, we would probably have the flip, the inverse of this picture, where the inquiry maybe was a small component with content really driving our work. And to be sure, content is important, but really what drives us now is inquiry and building social studies practices and thematic understandings that run throughout a student's K-12 experience. And the content plays a role, but it becomes, as I've used this phrase before, the connective tissue. It connects from practice to practice and theme to theme, and provides some of that context for our students. And here are the themes, there are a ton of them, I won't read them. The blue are ones that we will talk about tonight and what we will see specifically in action, and then the practices. And really thinking about social studies from a skill-based perspective, which is different for us in terms of what we normally have done. And so while, for many folks, this might seem to be a monumental change, in Webster, we have been digging into this. This is really our second year. We began looking at the original draft frameworks from the fall of 2012. We started to introduce these to our teachers, did some planning, we've aligned some assessments to some of the themes and practices, and really started to get familiar with what these might look like. We've also played a very important role in shaping these documents. As we mentioned, Greg Elquist serves on the Content Advisory Panel, and having him as an avenue to provide feedback to, Greg met with our teachers, our middle school, high school, and a group of elementary teachers, shared the information, got feedback from them, and we were able to actually see some of our recommendations play out in the finished document. Kate and I had the opportunity to meet and talk on a number of occasions with people from the State Education Department, whose focus is on social studies. And then in May, we were excited, the Rochester Area Council of Social Studies, both Greg and I were able to present the final frameworks. Greg spoke at the secondary level, and then I was able to talk about some of the work we've been doing at the elementary level in a co-presenter status with the Social Studies Associate at State Ed, Patricia Pollan. And so we think about the broader sense of our work, it's important now to drill down what does this mean for Webster? And we always need to anchor our work in the strategic vision that the board sets. And so when we think about our act- And so, when we think about our academic goals, it's important that we connect our work back there and think about the role of depth in our content area and our student learning throughout the K-12 perspective. And with that, I will turn it over to Kate Hesler, who will talk about some of the work that we undertook at fourth grade.
Good evening. As we drill down to what this really does mean for us here in Webster as educators and for our students, I'm going to frame for you tonight how district-wide collaboration at the elementary level has led to the implementation of a fourth grade unit aligned to the new social studies framework across all of our seven buildings. We also have some fourth grade teachers here tonight who will pick up where I leave off and share with you some of the lessons from the unit and the specific impact that it's had on our students. So as Terry mentioned, this work began really two years ago when the first draft of the framework was released for public comment. And at that time, our instructional team began thinking about the creation of some model units for use here in Webster. And we created two, one for fifth grade, which was a unit on immigration, and the second was a unit for fourth grade on the American Revolution. We wanted to be sure that this new unit would be well-aligned to the key ideas and conceptual understandings outlined in the framework document. And some of those are listed on the screen. And we also had a very strong desire for the units to provide students with many opportunities to employ those social studies practices for the grade level. As Terry mentioned, the practices represent the social science and historical thinking skills that we expect students to develop as they are building deep background knowledge and understanding simultaneously. Two of the practices that were a central focus for this unit came from the chronological reasoning and causation strand. And these were, explain how events are related chronologically to one another, distinguish between long-term and immediate causes and effects of a current event or an event in history. We felt that studying the events and the context of the American Revolution would be a very strong position from which to teach our students about how to analyze cause and effect. And it was important for us to structure our learning experiences such that they would teach students not only about the different events and the people that were part of this period of history, but how they were strategically connected, both through that chronology and the impact that they had on future events and relationships. We really wanted our students to come away from this knowing how the outcomes of these important events influenced both future events, culture, and society. So as referenced in that second bullet, this took the form of both in the short-term sense, such as how Boston Tea Party triggered the British enactment of the Intolerable Acts and subsequent events, and also the long-term sense, for example, how the colonists' growing frustration with their exclusion from British parliamentary proceedings led to how the founding fathers structured our government. Two more important practices came from the comparison and contextualization strand. And these were, identify multiple perspectives of a historical event and describe historical developments with specific circumstances, including time and place. Again, we felt that studying the events and context of the American Revolution was a strong position for which to develop these critical thinking skills. We studied the perspectives of the loyalists and the patriots, Native Americans, women, all within this historical time period context. Our unit incorporated the reading of primary and secondary source texts, video, several interactive and engaging collaborative learning tasks aimed at strengthening the historical thinking skills and building these deep understandings for our students. When we finished drafting the initial written unit plan, we shared it with the Plank South fourth grade team. And this team agreed to co-teach the unit with us as a pilot last spring. Throughout teaching the unit, we reflected with the teachers on the body of student work that we were gathering, the assessments, and the experience we were having in the classroom. We took some time to revise the unit based on this experience and also to update it as additional drafts of the framework were released. This year, we shared the revised unit with all of our fourth grade teachers in late fall. And we had a district-wide collaborative discussion, which was led by the pilot fourth grade team from Plank South. And out of this conversation came a decision by all the fourth grade teachers to implement this unit in all of our buildings during late winter of this year. So I'd like to turn it over to the fourth grade team and for a glimpse of some lessons and samples of student work.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by telling you about key components of our American Revolution unit. Throughout the unit, we used a variety of primary and secondary sources to help the students understand this time period. These sources included poetry, paintings, drawings, articles, music, videos, which usually showed the kids' reenactments of important events, such as the Boston Tea Party or crossing the Delaware. Even the popular series, The Magic Treehouse, has a chapter book called War on Wednesday, which was about the American Revolution, and they enjoyed that. Primary sources gave the students a nice opportunity to hear voices of the times, whereas the secondary sources helped us to learn about key events and battles and hear different perspectives on the war depending on who was doing the reporting. Martha Ervlin will now talk about how we integrate our target ELA skills with the social studies unit.
Good evening. In order to help students understand these documents, they needed a way to access. So we gave them some strategies that they could use as they were going through these documents. When it was a textual document, we had the students continue to use the close read and annotate strategy that we taught them back in September and that we've been using all year long. We also continued to have our practice of stating the gist of a text and writing it at the bottom. And this helped the students to put things into their own words and to begin that whole idea of paraphrasing. When it was a visual or an oral, they had to listen to music type of a document, students used the See, Think, Wonder strategy, where they were able to note what they saw or heard, then note down the thinking that was going through their head as they were listening or watching, looking at something. And finally, the wonder was a place for them to create questions that they had about whatever it was they were looking at and how that may be connected to what we were learning about the American Revolution. Both these strategies were able to make the students' thinking visible. It was visible to them, to their peers, and to myself. And it was a way for them to document their thinking as opposed to just speaking it. In this, for this, the document camera that I had from the teacher center was extremely useful. The students could actually come up, put their own thinking down there. I could put my thinking on there. So it was an immediate thing as opposed to me trying to go and copy and do all that. So the document camera was really, really helpful. We discovered, though, that these skills and strategies were very transferable to other subjects as we've kind of been going through the year. And if you think about it, they are strategies they can use throughout their education. So we saw them as being strategies to support the whole idea of being career, college, and community-ready when they graduate from Webster. So Dana will now talk about the student work around cause and effect.
Good evening. So the goal here is to use a Revolutionary War unit to have the kids learn about cause and effect. The students have this staircase in their binder and they record all of their events as we learn them. We explain to the students that we'll be using the staircase throughout the entire unit to gain an understanding of what was going on during the time period in chronological order. We want the students to make the connections between the events as they learn them and we want them to see the relationships between them. Learning about a specific event in the order that it occurred and visually seeing it on their staircase every day allows the students to understand the cause and the effects. And then at the end, the children had to, for their assessment, they had to choose one of the major events that's on their staircase. And they could use their binder where they collected all of their evidence from what we've learned. And then they had to list the causes, they had to list the effects, using evidence from their binder. And now Barb Harrington is going to talk about some of the writing that her students did, and it revolves around perspective.
Thank you, Dana. As you can see from the steps that Dana talked about, each of the students kept a binder, kept track of what they were doing day by day. They referred to it all the time, they used it in their writing. We kept these binders in chronological order, we tabbed them. It was something we used consistently. We also talked about perspective, especially during the Civil War, the Revolutionary War. We talked about what does a patriot believe, what does a loyalist believe? Children could go back to the texts, the primary and secondary sources. They could go back to their binders. They worked together in groups. They created their own centers and their lists of what they'd like to do. And then I asked them to write me a letter. I asked them to, in their groups separately, decide, are you a patriot? Are you a loyalist? What are your reasons? Make sure you use text evidence. Write me a well-composed letter. So the kids worked in groups, then they separated and each wrote a separate, different letter to me. So I received 21 wonderful letters, really showing me that they understood the perspective that they were talking about. Binder was an excellent resource tool. We ended up using it for other units also and collecting data. And we let them use their binders, like Dana said, for the end-of-the-year assessment. The kids enjoyed sharing all their work together. They learned to apply the practice of multiple perspectives, as shown in my two samples here. But you should read them all, they were great. It really brought home, they got the gist, they got what they were doing. So thank you. And Mark's ready to go, so.
Thank you. In eighth grade this year, we really focused on developing the transferable literacy skills that were learned in fourth grade, integrated with the social studies content. The lesson I'm going to talk about tonight was actually created by the Stanford History Education Group. They are driving force in changing assessment, especially the AP exams. These lessons, all of them that I've looked at, that they've created, enable students to practice the skills along with applying the content to answer an intriguing historical-based question, using evidence to support their answer. The one tonight we're going to talk about is, was the New Deal a success or a failure? And so, the students had to answer that question based on seven primary source documents. You will be able to see, looking at the eighth grade targets here, how there's a increased rigor for the chronological reasoning and comparison and contextualization. Students are asked to do more, as they should be. There's an increased sophistication from eighth grade, from fourth grade, excuse me. The structured academic controversy that we did in class required the students to answer the question, was the New Deal a success or a failure, based on the seven primary source documents. To answer the question, the students needed to be able to compare, analyze, and interpret multiple perspectives represented in the various documents. And what I did with the seven documents is I used Moodle, which is a new technology, the district actually has a license for it. I was able to put the requirements for the essay that they wrote at the end right on there. And the students typed up the essays on the laptops and then submitted them through the Moodle website. So then I'm able to go on and grade them and make marks and all that and send it back to the students without using paper and all that. Anyway, we're going to look at some student samples now. The first one, and you can see how this one applies to chronological reasoning. The student points out that the Agricultural Adjustment Act, which paid farmers not to farm the land, also had an effect of forcing 100,000 African-American sharecroppers off of the land because that land was no longer being farmed. And so, they're able to show the effect of what that act had on more people than just the actual farmers. It was designed to help. Eighth graders are also asked to evaluate opposing arguments. And you can see here, this student, by ending the one paragraph, they are able to say that the New Deal was a success. In the next body paragraph, though, they have to go and evaluate the fact that there were some failures and shortcomings with it. And we found that the students have actually increased the amount of analysis they're using in their writing because they do have to look at the opposing argument. And so, it forces them to analyze, whereas in the past, or you know, at the younger grades, where they are only supporting their point of view, they may not require as much analysis. And the final thing that we ask our students to do in the paper is try to connect to the modern day. And so, this is an example of the student being able to connect New Deal programs, such as the Social Security Act and its benefits during the New Deal to its benefits today with things like unemployment benefit. So now, I will send it back to Terry. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. We also, on the eighth grade this year at SPRI, created an ELA social studies research project. It was supported through the creative collaboration at the Webster Professional Learning Center. What it is, is a research-based project where the students have to answer the question, what is the most significant event in U.S. history? And they do their own research, they have to use documents, they have to come up with at least two primary source documents to support their answer. And then they are writing a proposal on it, which is due tomorrow. And next week, they're turning in a museum exhibit. And then we will have them exhibit it to their classmates. Now, I'll send it back to Terry.
And so, we've been speaking a lot about the board goal number one. What I want to do is transition now to board goal number two, which focuses on our CARE and PBIS and that building that positive school culture, in particular, the development of student leadership opportunities. In this past year, we've been implementing through a revised course, which had been UN Society, now transitioning to UN Society Leadership and connecting to the socialized practice of civic participation and what a graduating senior should be able to do. And we saw some of this through Citizens in Action. And when we think about what UN Society is, it's really focused on where students are at and how they fit into larger society. And so, we adjust this course based on student interest and student needs. And the UN Society Leadership Course drew and built some connection through our Link Crew and through the Boomerang Project and really designed to be both reflective and more importantly, an experiential opportunity for our students to develop their leadership capacity and really be able to live out what we had hoped through board goal number two. And at this, I'll turn over to one of the teachers from Webster Thomas, Emily Miller.
Hi, how are you? I just want to point out that last picture was musical chairs and leadership where nobody gets eliminated. So that's the entire class on two chairs. So they really enjoyed each other by the end of the year. So it was really a lot of fun. Glenn Whidore asked me to, if I would be interested in teaching the course. And as a Link Crew advisor with Cheryl Navarro, I jumped on the opportunity to teach a leadership class. I did not understand the gift that I was being given. It really is a very powerful course and I'm really lucky that I get to do it and you guys pay me to do that. I really enjoy it. It's just an amazing experience. I started the school year off with having students take a personality test. The Enneagram is a personality test. It's a theory in the world that there are nine different personalities. There isn't a good personality or a bad personality. It doesn't matter what your number is, there's a good side and a bad side, a vice side and a virtue side to every number. Just to give you an example, I'm an eight and an eight is the challenger. So for those of you who know me, that really doesn't surprise you very much, I'm sure. And so, I had students take that test with the intention that in order to lead a group of people, you really need to understand yourself. What are you good at, what are you not good at? And what are the healthy levels of yourself? And how do you achieve that healthy level of who you are, of your number? And students were able to take the test and learn a lot about themselves through their number and really start to work on, how do you achieve a healthy level of your personality? Because that's what makes the best leaders, is people who are in a healthy place. And it was very powerful because you had a lot of students who were able to relate to each other. And it really is all how you are wired. I'm an eight, I won't become a different number at any time during my life, but I can become a healthy level of my number. It's just how you're wired and who you are. And it allowed for them to learn about each other and understand that people are going to see things differently and it's all how we are wired. And instead of judging, you kind of take a step back and go, okay, I get where you're coming from. And it was a very powerful experience for them. Then I moved into who are we? And what I had students do was called a show and tell. That is one of my students, my leadership students, who did her show and tell. And really, you could get up and you could talk about anything that you wanted. You got up and you could reveal anything that someone wouldn't know about you. And Nicole Nelson got up, and that's a picture of her with her blankie. She may kill me right now that I just used that picture. She may kill me right now that I just used that picture. It occurred to me at this moment, I never asked her about it, but hopefully she's not watching. But she got up, and Nicole is a varsity lacrosse player. She is well-respected among her peers. She is a natural-born leader, and really just fits in very well with the Thomas culture. And she got up and admitted that she doesn't go anywhere or do anything without her blankie. And here is the senior in high school who whips out her blankie. You would never have known it was a blankie, because it was in shreds, as you can see from that picture, and goes on about how even sleepovers, she brings that blankie. And it just kind of allowed students to get to know her a little bit. We had some laughs. We also had students get up and share some really, really deep, personal things about themselves that we never would have known. Very powerful things, and it really gave students a chance to connect with each other. Students who, you know, you think someone has a perfect life, and then they get up and they talk about, you know, what's really going on. And that was very powerful for our students. And so they got to break down barriers about each other, got to break down stereotypes, and realize we're all people, and we're all on a journey, and that things, you know, happen in life, and how are you going to deal with that and become a healthy level of yourself? And so as the school year, as the semester went, we learned that true leaders give back to the community. And this is where I struggled as a teacher a little bit, because I have control issues, that's part of being an eight. So it's hard for me to give up control in my classroom, and I had to do that, and it was a learning experience for me. I took a step back, and I said, okay, what are you guys going to do for a community service project? They had decided that leadership is about giving back. So I said, okay, go. And they said, all right, we're going to elect a leader. And they elected a leader of the class, and this is, they decided what they were going to do. It was the quietest I've ever been in a block. It was difficult, it was painful. At times, I had to, like, move away, just to let them work out situations, and it was the most powerful, one of the most powerful things that I've ever done as a teacher, because what they chose to do, and the way that they did it, was better than anything that I could have planned for them. And they chose, in one of my classes, this is my fourth block leadership class, they chose to give back and help elementary students with their reading. A group went to Schlegel, another group went to East Rochester Elementary School, and another group went to the Rochester City School. They learned a lot about poverty, they learned a lot about, just life lessons, and they, it was a total leadership opportunity, and they did a great job with that. My seventh block class, Maddie Danowski was a part of that class, and Maddie, about a month and a half into the school year, was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. And, you know, we were, you know, very upset by that, because our class became so close. We got to know each other very well. And so my students in seventh block decided that they wanted to give back to Hodgkin's lymphoma. So they took it upon themselves to design those T-shirts. The quote on the back is a quote that Maddie did, her inspirational quote that she chose in the beginning of our leadership course. And they raised money for Hodgkin's lymphoma. They did more than just the T-shirts, they did half-court shots at the basketball games. They did a lot of other things, and it was all to show their support to Maddie. And I'm happy to say that she fought and beat Hodgkin's lymphoma, so we are very happy about that, and feel very blessed to have Maddie in our building. And now I'm going to turn it over to two of my students who took the leadership class, and they're going to talk about what the leadership class meant to them and did for them. And the first one that is going to speak is David Brannigan.
Good evening, Board. So, at first, during the leadership course, I didn't really know what to expect from it. I had Mrs. Miller, or Ms. Miller, for Study Hall freshman year, and so I kind of knew what she was kind of like and everything, but I never really knew her as a teacher. And so this leadership course, we got to actually get really close, and I'm glad I did. Like, I don't know. And so, this Enneagram test, I think everyone should take it. I had people in our sociology class saying, like, can we take it? Can we take it? But you have to take leadership in order to take it. Some of her are seniors, so I feel bad, but. When I took this test, my number was a two. And the two is, they call it the helper. And basically, you feel you need to be needed by others, you need to be liked by others. And if you feel that you aren't being liked by others, you do anything in your power to get them to like you. And so then I was like, I need more, I want to know more. So Ms. Miller gave me the website, and I went on, and I just kept reading, reading. And we're basically wired, I'm wired to be socially aware of basically everything. And sometimes we're like, we're extroverts, and we like to go that extra mile to help others, go out of our way, to help others, no matter the field we're in or anything. And by doing that, sometimes we forget about ourselves, and then that's when the dark side of the two comes out. Basically, what happens is, you feel that you don't receive the love that you give to others in return, so you become irrational, and you become like, just not healthy. And you actually start to isolate yourself from others, and become silent. And what, basically, this leadership course, what I got out of it was, well, I'm actually class president of the junior class, and the past three years, and I had no, really, no idea of how to actually be a good leader. And so, taking this course, I was like, sign me up, let's do it. So, I did it. And what I got out of it was, not only how I figured out I was wired, but how to actually lead people, and not just kids, but like, adults and stuff. Like Ms. Miller said, we took over the whole course to do that project. I wasn't the leader, but I helped partake in that, and it was definitely, it honestly helped. And I know Eric can advocate for that, and my whole class, and Maddie, and just everyone can advocate for that. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron now.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Erin Buckley. I'm a, well, I'm technically a junior, but like, I'm graduating this year, so I guess I'm a senior, whatever you want to call it. But I was also in her fourth block class for leadership, so me and David weren't in the same class, so we kind of had like a different experience, sort of, just because it was such like a personal class, sort of. The Enneagram was really cool, just because it, like, showed you, like, why you make certain decisions, and like, how you react to certain things, because of like, uppassings that you've gone through, and like, held on to, and like, you know, like resentments that you don't really know that you have, and like, that's why you get mad about certain stuff, that like, you know, you flip out over, like, spilled milk or whatever, but it's really because, you know, your dad forgot you at the soccer game, like, a long time ago. And it's like, you know? So like, little stuff, or like, big stuff like that, but. So like, it helped me realize, like, a lot of like, past decisions that I've made, and like, ways that I've reacted to certain things. My favorite part was like, the show and tell, though, because I, like, I went up and I talked about, like, my dad and this, like, financial issues, and like, my, I have, like, I'm such a big family, and like, just, kind of like, how I grew up, and like, things I got out of that, and like, the respect that I have for my dad because of it, and like, it just, like, to talk, like, to people that I've been in classes with for, like, all of high school, but like, I don't really know very well, and like, they got up and shared personal stuff, too. It was just cool, like, see them in a different way, and like, realize, like, people, like, like, everyone's like a person, and they have a story, and like, everyone, like, is worth to, like, get to know, because like, you never really know, and like, everyone's just so interesting and stuff, so, like, you really, like, meet people and see who they really are. And then, it kind of came at a cool time, the course, for me. I think it should be geared toward, like, juniors and seniors, just because, like, it fits in, like, with the decisions we're making and everything, and like, so I think, like, time-wise, that'd be cool. For me, it was perfect, because I'm, since I'm graduating early, I was looking into, like, things I could do for, you know, next fall and next year. And I was looking into, like, going abroad and stuff, but I hadn't really, like, decided what I wanted to do yet. So I was looking up with Ms. Charlton, I don't know if you know her, she's a counselor at Thomas, she's great. We were going through, like, things to do, and she, I, we came across this website called Rally International. So I'm going to Tanzania, Africa, in October. It's like 10 weeks, so two and a half months, three months, and it's all, like, volunteer work, it's, they're like a sustainable development, like, charity, so, instead of, like, going in, like, giving them, like, aid and, like, sneakers and stuff, like, we give them tools to, like, continue to, like, better their community and things that will just, like, you know, improve their living conditions and stuff. So for me, like, it helped kind of build confidence in myself, and like, the decisions that I were making were good decisions, healthy decisions, and things that would benefit me in, like, the future. And also, a lot of it is, like, fundraising and finding donations, so like, to get out there and, like, talk to people and let them know what I'm doing, and like, everyone was so supportive of my cause and everything, and I've gotten so many donations from school, and like, just to get your community, like, together and do something. And it's so easy, too, it's just like, you know, an email, or just talking to people, introducing yourself, and, you know, showing, like, just being confident, like, who you are, and like, knowing why you do certain things, and how you're going to react, and having, like, a little bit of control over how you're going to, like, react to those situations, just makes everything, like, a lot easier, and like, you're a lot more confident in what you're doing. So I think it's a great course, I think it was really helpful for me to, like, learn socially about my class, and like, just, I don't know, about, like, doing things for yourself, and like, learning for yourself, and, I don't know, you know, leading people places.
All right, well, certainly, we appreciate the time and the opportunity to share. As you know, the challenge in social studies is to whittle down content, and we obviously have a lot of work to do, based on our presentation tonight, but there is a lot of content here, so we apologize there. But I think ultimately, this quote sums up what we're hoping to see, and I think what we're already starting to see, and that is, the goal of knowledgeable thinking and active citizens is universal, and hopefully, we're working towards that through our social studies curriculum. And with that, I'll answer, well, the whole team will answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say, thank you for excellent presentation, and students, thank you for giving up some time tonight to come. That was really insightful, what you brought forward, and thank you for doing it.
Ian?
First of all, I love the definition, the integration of the social studies and humanities, because that just so sums it up, and that's what I saw woven through much of what you shared tonight. So, for the students, I will just say, please, keep that positive and optimistic focus as you get out into the big, bad world that puts profits and other goals sometimes ahead of that common good. So, sounds like you're well on your way for that, and good luck to you. Just wanted to ask a little bit, because I loved the unit on the American Revolution, and did any of the students choose to be a loyalist? Oh, so they did. So they did see that perhaps there was a responsibility for, okay, very good, so that was interesting. But I do like the cause and effect, I mean, and again, I know one of the themes of the social studies curriculum is the across space and time, and I see that represented throughout the various grade levels, and I think that's really important, so I appreciate that that's the focus, and that unit was a great example. And I was going to ask, when, Emily, is your class, is it primarily a senior class?
It's for juniors.
It is for juniors and seniors, so, yeah, very good. Well, thank you very much, great presentation by all of you.
Thank you, Ian. Sue?
Just thank you very much, it's a great report.
I heard how social studies is changing, and I like the whole idea about the theme and the practices and the skills, but I have a fundamental question that I just can't find the answer to. You're a first-year teacher in social studies, how do you know what to teach?
Depends on the grade level?
All right. I'm being very picky. On page three, grade four says, "Local history." Yet we heard "American Revolution."
Yeah. And that, that is actually a bit of a misnomer, relative to what they're asking. It's, it delves deep. So the actual framework itself has specific content headings and conceptual understandings that we want students to be able to walk away with. And so, "American Revolution" is embedded as part of the local history, there is a New York component, and so part of the unit does bring out the role that New York plays in the American Revolution.
They basically, we did a lot of the battles, the battles of New York, and New York City was pivotal, because that was a piece that the British, they wanted to control New York City. So a lot of it, we kind of did it from the New York perspective.
Mark, you mentioned the standard history group. You got your lesson plan from there. Tell me a little bit more about that standard history group.
It is, they have a website, it's free, alls you have to do is, you know, get a username and password. They have a couple of different things. The one is called Reading Like a Historian, and that's where this came from. And they actually have lesson plans on there. I think for American history, they have 73 different lesson plans, for world history, I think they have 25. And basically, each lesson focuses on the skills, but using the primary and sometimes secondary sources. They're designed to have students working together. For example, the one we did, or the one I shared with you tonight, the students worked in pairs, and then they worked in groups of fours, so you'd have a partner group that found all of the evidence for the New Deal being a success, and they would be partnered up with a partner group that found the failures. And then they would basically have 10 minutes to argue, or, you know, debate, discuss. And they were supposed to try to reach a consensus, and then we had an entire group discussion the next class, and so they got an opportunity to hear multiple perspectives and multiple interpretations by their classmates. At the end, they were allowed to choose either side they wanted to, the important thing was how they supported it, and what evidence they used.
Totally agree, but I'm trying to get at the actual teacher prep. So, do you share this with your PLC, the standard history group?
Yes, yes.
Lessons? Good.
Yes.
I also, I know that the New York Times offers a number of historical lessons there.
And I will say, as a teacher, using lessons like that, you have to be fully conscious of what your learning outcomes are. I do make minor modifications based on classes and things of that nature, so I think it's important, they don't, teachers don't just take the lesson as it's given, I think they have to really understand it, understand their students, and use it to the way best for their students.
You opened up a conversation, I'm afraid to even say this, but the fact that you did that is great, and I'm wondering, I wish New York State would get that across, that the teachers are smart enough to take their information and use it, rather than saying, this is what you have to do.
Right. I agree wholeheartedly.
I wasn't going to mention that word, but.
We've done that at fourth grade also. The first year, I think, we kind of stuck to the road and tried to understand it, first time, but in going through that, but second year, the second year of doing it, we're the team that works together, laughs together, talks together, and we realized exactly what Mark said. It's exactly what we do. We find the best pieces and do the best we can.
That's what we hope the PLCs do. And Erin and David, did Mrs. Casey and I visit your class?
No.
No? It was second period, was it?
You came to fourth. That was sociology.
Oh, okay. Because I couldn't remember them at all, so. All right, board members, this does require action. May we have a motion to accept the social studies report, please?
Second.
Thank you, a second? All in favor?
Right.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for a great report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adele, would you like to give us your report, please?
Absolutely. I'd like to begin this evening by expressing my sincere thanks to the Webster community for coming out and voting on our school budget. Throughout the budget season, our district asked for community support, and every time, our community responded. When we asked you to reach out to our legislators and advocate for change relative to the gap elimination adjustment, we had thousands of letters that were sent to legislators and emails. We provided you with detailed budget information in the form of websites, newsletters, Facebook posts, and video messages, and we thank everyone who watched our videos, we had many, many views of our videos on Facebook, we had sharing on Facebook. We asked you to make an informed vote, and I'm pleased to say that not only did you respond, you did so with a resounding 65% supermajority of yes votes. Once again, you made your voices heard at the polls and voted yes on a budget that will impact- impact more than 8,800 students. So we're putting the results up here on the screen for you. And we just want to note that we're especially happy that we increased voter participation this year by 920 votes, up 30% from last year. And that was one of our goals, is to have people engage with the process and come out and vote. So thank you to everyone who made a special effort to vote. All those 920 extra voters, we want you to come back next year and bring a friend. We still want to get that percentage up and get as many people as we can out and participating in our budget. Since we're already talking about money, it's the perfect time to share with you the impressive fundraising efforts of all seven Webster Elementary Schools for the American Heart Association. So each year, our schools, elementary schools, they participate in either a Hoops for Heart or Jump Rope for Heart event to benefit the American Heart Association. So all told, all seven schools raised a grand total of $98,797. Now, I could not believe that figure, that I, and we've heard about individual fundraising efforts, but when you put them all together, $98,000 for the Heart Association. All of those funds will stay in the Rochester area, support research, and overall services of that association. Congratulations to every student who shot a basket or skipped rope so someone else could benefit. A true representation of the Webster Cares motto in Webster, in action. Next, I'd like to offer my congratulations to a talented group of Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas High School students. These are from the Eastern Monroe Career Center, National Technical Honor Society induction ceremonies. They were held last week, and the students that you see up on the screen represent nearly one-third of the 158 students that met the standards for this honor. So from Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas, there were nine schools in, in this educational Monroe Career Center, and our students represented a third of the students on this Technical Honor Society list. To qualify for the National Technical, Technical Honor Society, a student must be a junior or senior in high school and have a 90% average or higher in their continuing technical education program. And they have to maintain a 95% or higher attendance rate and be recommended by a teacher for this honor. And if you, as you see on the screen, you can see all the different career pathways that are represented in this Technical Honor Society. Also of note in high school news are two of Schrader's 13 national qualifiers from the speech and debate team. They're called octo-finalists at the National Catholic Forensic League's Grand National Tournament held in Chicago over the weekend. And as such, are now nationally ranked speakers. So we have two of our senior students being nationally ranked speakers, well, actually not seniors. Congratulations to sophomore, Ella F. Airson, who placed in declamation, and Sarah Stone Fracotti, who placed in oral interpretation. So, since these are just sophomore students, I'm sure we're going to be hearing more from them. And finally, had the opportunity to attend the Dr. Michael C. O'Laughlin Outstanding Senior Recognition Dinner last week. It was with the Monroe County Council of School Superintendents, and we honored our area's exemplary students, and there was one from each high school. So, Abigail Wazellis of Webster Thomas, class of 2014, and Yifan Kang of Webster Schrader's, class of 2014. Both these young ladies are at the top of their class. They have an impressive resume of school and community activities and service. After spending time with them, I also had the pleasure of experiencing firsthand the excellence they exude from the inside out. It really was a fun night to spend with them and their families, and to see them interact with all of the Monroe County outstanding seniors from around our region. Congratulations to both of them as they leave us, as fine representatives of the Webster Central School District. And with that student news, that ends my report.
Thank you, Adele. Board members, we, the superintendent recommends that we approve the contracts for food service and secretaries, but before we do that, Carmen, would you like to give us a little history on that?
Both of these contracts are for...
Both of these contracts are for three years apiece. And our food service contract covers 45 to 50 members. And it included wage increases, a moderate rate, wage increase of two and a half percent for each of the three years, a, an increase in health, healthcare contribution by, by the employee, for those employees hired after July 1st, and also an, an increase in the number of years it will take to vest with a medical benefit into retirement. And we actually followed that type of model for the second contract that we're asking you to approve tonight, and that is with the secretarial unit. This unit has approximately 80 members. It again is a three-year contract that goes until June of 2017. It also has, again, a modest increase of approximately two and a half percent with, with an increase in healthcare contribution by the employee that are, the new employees that are hired after July 1. And also, that increase in, in the vesting time. The, our new healthcare contribution is one that is one of the, one of the most conservative healthcare contributions in terms of what we contribute, what the district contributes across Monroe County. And the vesting, the increase of 20 years is also something that, there might, there may be one other district in Monroe County that does the same. So, thank you to both those units for understanding some of the economic factors that are facing our district, and for working so collaboratively around this. And so, Adele, and I, and Jim recommend that you approve both of these contracts.
Thank you, Carmen. Any questions from the board? If it pleases the board, can we do these separately? Okay. And we have a motion to ratify the food service contract, please. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have a motion, please, to ratify the secretaries, or should we use the, was it AOP?
AEOP.
AEOP.
Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move into, since we have no old business, we'll move into school liaison reports. Go ahead, Anne.
Clem North has their final meeting next week. It's been a great year. They've done wonderful programs. They've had great participation. Very impressed with the professional way their meetings are held, and I look forward to serving them again next year.
Thank you. Tom?
State Road had their final meeting just before our last board meeting, but they are having a volunteer appreciation breakfast within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Schlegel had their final meeting a couple of weeks ago, which I reported on last meeting. Couple of upcoming events on June 2nd, which is Monday, is a spring concert. June 6th, Friday, starts their used book sale. And on the 13th, which is a Friday, Friday the 13th, is their Flag Day ceremony and picnic.
Thank you, Sue. Last night, we had our annual meeting of the Monroe County School Boards Association. Sue, shall we ask you to give us a little report?
Sure. Our keynote speaker was Jim Lawrence of the DNC, and he spoke about inequity in education between our most needy students and our most fortunate students. Also elected our officers for next year, Mark Kokonovich from the Brighton School Board will be president. Barb Petrona from Hilton will be the vice president, and John Abbott will be the Boce, from Boce's, too, will be the treasurer. And I'll be the past president.
Thank you.
Past, past president.
Tom, anything to report from NISBA?
Two things. One, some of the folks who were in attendance last night heard this, but NISBA is sponsoring something called MIX Municipal Information Exchange. They've held one in Syracuse, and they'll be holding them in other parts of the states, or there's going to be two or three more. Basically, what they're doing is, basically replicating what we've done in Webster before to bring towns and county officials together in other types of municipalities to share our best ideas, find out where they can do things collectively, and as a group, save money for the taxpayer. So, NISBA is actually orchestrating that. And then, we have our summer board meeting coming up on next weekend, 6/6 and 6/7. That's it.
Thank you, Tom. I'll wait. Jim?
Yes.
Do we have a date yet set for the audit committee?
No, we don't.
All right, so...
And I will send you and Mike, Mike Guston is the other.
Correct.
I'll get your dates. I have dates from Erin, the internal claims auditor, but she can't be there, so I'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay. So, nothing really to report from audit? Probably nothing to report from policy?
No.
Fritz is not here, unless some, I don't know, anybody want to talk about budget advisory?
We reported on the last meeting.
Okay. You had strategic planning meeting today, didn't you? So, is anything there?
Just, we're having our last meeting on June 4th, and at that meeting, we're going to be reviewing the progress, progress we've made to date and plan our next steps. And we're going to be reporting to the board at our first summer workshop, first or second.
Okay, thank you. And Tom or Sue, anything to report on SEPTA?
Participated in golf tournament, supporting the organization last weekend.
I, I asked, but they don't know how much money they made yet.
They did have great participation.
Yeah. So maybe we'll be able to report that next time.
Tom hits a mighty good ball.
Thank you, Michael.
Hey, just because I was in your force, and we almost won at Skins.
That's right.
You're close.
All right, board members, you had a chance to look at the consent agenda. It includes the minutes of our last couple of meetings, personnel actions, recommendation on the committee on special education, also the recommendations on the committee on preschool education. There are also a couple of cooperative bids for things such as bread and ice cream and milk. And, well, that, yes. So, may we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So before we adjourn, please note that we do have an executive session June 5th, and that our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June 12th. With that being said, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.